Hello and welcome to this special session on business events and legacies of our conference. I am Andreas Sings, I'm currently the editor-in-chief of the International Journal of Business Events and Legacies. And we, I'm today together with...
Hi, I'm Ying Ying, I'm the managing editor for the International Journal of Business Events and Legacies.
So we both are the moderators of this session, we have three speakers. And as I mentioned, we focus on this panel more on the legacy and impact side of business events. So we will not talk about managing satisfaction of event attendees. And this is the main interest of our new journal. And this is the reason why we joined this conference and invited also other audiences that we commonly address through our IG build studios. So I welcome in this session all those who are physically in the room and those who attend online. We have three speakers, as I mentioned, and we, the speakers are arranged like that. From, we will go start from a more general background, a conceptual background about responsible tourism. And then have two papers and presentations which address some particular aspects and perspectives of legacies related to events. So let's start.
Okay, so first of all, let's welcome Dr. Li Ding, who is also the editor reviewer board member for the International Journal of Business Events and Legacies. So Dr. Li Ding, over to you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Li Ding, I'm from the Institute of Publicus in France. Today, I'd like to use this panel discussion opportunity to share the topic of the responsible tourism and the sustainability. As well, from the tourism-related industries, we're familiar with the concept of the tourism. Following the definition from UNWTO, tourism includes any activities of a person traveling and staying in a place outside his or her normal environment, moves to other place of his or her choices less than a year with the business purpose, legal purpose, or other purposes. Basically speaking, tourism includes four basic types. There are international tourism, domestic tourism, internal tourism, and national tourism. Under the category of the international tourism, it also includes the inbound and outbound tourism. Tourism has a close link with the culture and the destination's local community. Some listed benefits of the culture within the local communities are such as building the community pride in heritage, increasing awareness of the destination, preserving the local traditions and the culture, creating the opportunities for partnerships, creating job and businesses, attracting the different types of visitors, and generating the local investment, and also increasing the tax revenue for the local government. We'll see, the tourism has been one of the important tools in reducing the poverty around the world today. This industry creates jobs, investments, and other tourism-related money inflows to the destination. We can find this chart on the PowerPoint. The chart is from the book of Fall written in 2020. It shows the positive and negative consequences of the tourism. The positive benefits include the effect of the price and income elasticity, and also the economic consequences of the tourism spending, including the generation of the foreign exchange. This process stimulates the local economy through the multiplier effect, which can be indirect, indirect, and induced. From another side, the negative side. These negatives relate particularly to an increase in demand for imported goods whilst the travelers begin to appear, and also the revenue leakage out of the economy, over-dependence on the tourism, and the inflation of the local land value. As the emerging concept, the responsible tourism is in the scope of the general tourism and focused on the discussion of five aspects. So now, from the PowerPoint, we can find the five main objectives of the responsible tourism. The first objective is to benefit the local community, both economically and socially. And the next objective from the responsible tourism is to respect the local cultural traditions and the religions and the built heritage, and then help to conserve the natural resources from the source to the destination, and also to minimize the pollution and protect the environment. When we discuss the responsible tourism, normally three responsibility dimensions are focused on. So from this chart, we can find these three dimensions. The economic responsibility dimension, and the social and environmental responsibility dimensions. So under each dimension, we can find some key factors. Alright, so for example, the economic responsibility focused on the factors such as adopt the equitable business practices and pay and charge the fire prices, build the partnership in which the risk is minimized, and also recruit the employees recognizing the international labor standards. Some other factors, for example, maximize the local economic benefits by increasing the linkage and reducing the leakages in order to make sure the community are involved in and benefit from the tourism. And also use the tourism to assist in poverty reduction by adopting different types of strategies with the local communities, and provide the sufficient support to the small, medium, and macro-sized companies to the tourism-related matters. Under the dimension of the social responsibilities, we focus on minimizing the negative impacts on the local life quality, and also the market tourism should reflect the cultural, natural, and the social integrity of the destination, and to develop the quality products that reflect, complement, and enhance the destination. In the dimension of the environmental responsibilities, we focus on assess the environmental impacts throughout the life cycle of the tourist establishments and the operations. It must include the planning and the design phase and ensure the negative impacts are reduced to the minimum and maximizing the positive standard with the industry. And also, we need to use the resource sustainably and reduce the waste and reduce the over-consumption. Of course, we need also manage the natural diversity sustainably as well. So here are several key elements of the responsible tourism. So the market tourism, that is responsible respecting the local nature and the cultural environments, avoid the waste and over-consumption. And then the destination planner and the authorities should be sensitive to the local host culture and assess the environmental and economic and the social impact as the prerequisites to developing the tourism. The authorities also should monitor the impacts of the tourism and ensure the open disclosure of information to the public, and involve the local community in planning and the decision-making process. So for the sustainable tourism, also we have to maintain and encourage the economic, social, and the cultural diversity and ensure the local community are involved in and benefit from the tourism. As one of the key stakeholders, the role of the travelers in the responsible tourism should be checked as well. So as we knew, the individual's self-efficacy has been discussed a lot in determining their behavioral intentions and the actual behavior. So self-efficacy refers to the individual's judgment of their capabilities to organize and act to generate the performances. However, we'll see in the discussion of the travelers' responsible and sustainability-related behavioral intentions and the behavior, so their perceived collective efficacy cannot be ignored as well. So collective efficacy refers to a group's shared belief in their conjoint capabilities to organize and act to generate the performance. So individuals share the skills, knowledge, and the resources to collaborate and dynamically interact with each other to achieve the same goals. So therefore, we'll say the collective efficacy integrates the individual advocacy beliefs into one piece and contains a greater power than the simple sum of the individual's self-efficacy. Based on the previous study, we can find both travelers' self-efficacy and perceived collective efficacy can influence their ethical judgment and the green identity toward their responsible and the sustainability-related behavioral intentions and behaviors during the travel. So here, we may also pay attention to the different generations. So for example, the generation V and the differences between the Western and Eastern cultures. So all these factors will influence the travelers' interdependent and independent self-custody, and all these factors will also moderate their responsible efficacy and also their behavioral intentions. So for the local community involvement, the passive perception of the responsible tourism by the local community is important and has affected the sustainability of the destination. It also affects the people's perception of the life quality. So the local community is a key stakeholder, plays an important role in the tourism destination development. So their support is the key element in successful tourism development because the tourism planners and other authorities engaged in the tourism industry must be concerned with the community's views on the development plans. The involvement of the communities is particularly important to the success of the tourism development and the implementations of the responsible tourism. And from the previous study, we can find that the local community residence attitude may directly affect the development of the tourism industry. So often, the local community perceives the potential of the passive impacts on the local service through the improvement of the roads and then other public facilities as the tool for economic development strategy. So we find a study by Lenn and other colleagues in 2021. This study finds that the local community residence perception toward the benefits and the cost of the tourism development can influence their emotion and further can affect the local residents' value creation. So, okay, at the end of today's information sharing, I hope to exchange any ideas and opinions with you regarding the responsible tourism and sustainability. So here's my contact, I welcome any further research collaborations opportunity as well. Thank you for listen my talking, and then if you have any questions, please just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Li Ding, for your presentations. The three pillars of the responsible tourism impact is really a great reminder for everyone of us. Thank you so much.
Now we continue with our second presenter, Dr. Ubaldino Cuto. He is from Macau and also one of our associate editors of the International Journal of Business Events and Legacies. So he will introduce himself and about his topic.
Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening. Not sure where you are, but I'm hoping you are having a really great time at conference. My name is Ubaldino Cuto, and I'm from the School of Hospitality Management at the Macau Institute for Tourism Studies in Macau, China. I'd like to first thank the organizers for the invitation. Today, I'm going to share some of my thoughts on how food events contribute to the UN SDGs. Before we start, allow me to do some shameless self-promotion. I look after the tourism event management programs at IFTM. I teach both practical and theory courses in events. My students organize public life events as part of the curriculum. In my theory classes, I ask students to do research-based projects. I try to encourage my students to base their assignments on my research interests. I believe every research and every interest in research have their reasons and story. To cut short, mine were born out of my PhD studies and where I'm from. We have an incredible number of festivals and events here in Macau, and perhaps this is the reason that I'm very interested in these fascinating spectacles. The Makalisi identity and diaspora is a new research interest as I'm awakening to my identity. The Makalisi people are local-born mixed-blood of Portuguese ancestry dating back to many generations of us here in Macau. Therefore, you might be wondering why I look Chinese but have a purely Portuguese name. In the context of Malaysia, I think we are closest to the ethnic group of the Cristan people in Malacca. If you're interested to find out more about my professional profile, please scan the QR code and feel free to add me on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. I'm also on ResearchGate and LinkedIn too, just search my name. Before we look at food events, perhaps it is timely to remind ourselves of the seventeen goals out there. Now, one important question to ask is, can we address all of these goals through an event like food festival? Well, I don't think this is likely, but what I argue is that we should incorporate these goals as objectives while we plan food events, in fact, really any kind of event. Let's look at the first example that I'd like to share with you. Back ten years ago, when the Macau government only started to pay attention to the environmental impacts, and in particular, the waste we create at the Macau Food Festival, the authorities urged participants to the event to bring their own utensils. This is a standard practice in many events around the world, which is of course excellent. It probably contributes to goals twelve, fourteen, and fifteen. However, while we develop events to be more engaging and sophisticated for event goers, can we actually design our events so that they are more sustainable and address more of these goals? Almost ten years on, have we evolved into something more sustainable? Apart from encouraging event goers to bring their cutlery and introducing biodegradable cutlery, the authorities have also introduced more green efforts as reduction plans and repurposing ways by turning food leftovers into organic fertilizers. This may seem trivial in many countries, but in Macau, these are actually quite new features. Therefore, on top of goals twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, we have introduced at least a couple of other goals here, namely two, four, nine, and seventeen. As importantly, the level of sophistication of each of these goals, including the original ones, have also deepened and evolved further. But why do we need to bother about green efforts? I'm sure this is an easy question everyone can answer. But what I want to do is to remind each of us the very basis of the sustainable development concept introduced by Joe Brodland in the famous 1987 report. Meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of the future to meet their own needs. In Macau, we are pretty slow in environmental practices, but the government's efforts have been great in recent years by incorporating green measures in all walks of life, from businesses to households. I'm sure we are not alone, and many cities, regions, and countries, in particular this part of the world, also face the same problem. Therefore, I see an opportunity in food events in their role to play in contributing to the UN SDGs. Professor Judith Mayer and Professor Leo Jago published a model in 2010 listing the drivers and barriers of event greening. The blue on the left are drivers, and the red on the right are barriers. Although it was based on the context of business events, it offers a handy tool for studies in other event contexts. I'd like to draw to one, which was co-authored by my colleague here in IFTM. What they concluded is that the model is largely applicable in Macau. However, an important driver, personal value, the green one on the left-hand side, was missing, while they identified a new barrier, which is the green one on the right-hand side, lack of government support. In fact, they also noted the strongest perceptions among the research sample was particularly the lack of financial support from the government. The point that I would like to make here is that this is somewhat reaffirming my comment earlier about the need of further evolution and deeper sustainability efforts in contributing to the UN SDGs. For instance, personal values such as green thinking and living, you know, these are altruistic traits in hoping the better for the environment, is absolutely entirely here in Macau. Although I firmly believe things are improving and green thinking is increasingly being incorporated into events in general, I think it is important and possible we can instill such values through events. And in my presentation context, of course, through food events. But why not other types of events but food events? Well, I think they are very popular and ready in destinations around the world. They come in all forms, all shapes, all sizes, and they are just there. So to instill green values, and by that I don't mean only environmental ones, but also social and economic ones too, because, you know, the UN SDGs are very holistic and cover all aspects of concerns for the environment, economy, and society. So as a key takeaway for today's presentation, we can already start thinking of how we can use food events which are ready there to instill those green values. Food events are more than just food festivals, and food festivals are much more than just a gathering of people going to eat. Food events typically showcase food, an integral and inseparable aspect of culture. Sometimes, these cultures are not mainstream cultures of the destination but of ethnic minorities such as the diaspora communities. Many food events also feature many tangible cultural elements such as art and craft, dances, music, and performances. In some food events, there are even workshops where event goers can learn to cook, can learn about food and culture, their history. Food events are also platforms and opportunities, excuses if you like to call them, for people from different cultural backgrounds to talk to each other, to mingle, and to learn from each other. Many food events also work with community groups and ethnic associations, building a supportive and reciprocal business environment. Many food events also provide opportunities for the vulnerable people, vulnerable communities, for example, those in the LGBT plus communities, women, disabled people, ethnic minorities, as well as many other communities, the very opportunities to get to meet each other, to earn money, and to gain independence. These are some festivals that we celebrate different cultures in Macau. These people, as you can see, are able to showcase their culture, not just through the food, but also through dances, art, history, religion, and of course, many different aspects. I'd like to show you this short video of the Lusofonia Festival in Macau. It celebrates the many different Portuguese-speaking communities. Twenty years after the return from Portuguese to Chinese administration in Macau, this festival embraces and still embraces the cultural differences, history, pride, uniqueness, and sense of togetherness in Macau. My point is, how can we as festival organizers create experiences that doesn't only sell? Well, of course, selling is important, but also event experience that make, that create an immersive, memorable experience that even locals are proud of, that when tourists come, they can enjoy an authentic event. Events must create legacies, and these legacies must be meaningful. They must be impactful and sustainable, and therefore, they can contribute to the UN SDGs. I've observed that the drivers and barriers appeared to be very surface during the early days, but as time progresses, the support and form these drivers and barriers take shape become much more sophisticated. For instance, in the food festival example I showed earlier, the government began with simple advice for basic green efforts, but then they evolved into educating event goers by reducing food waste and turning these food waste into organic fertilizers. The desire to go green by event goers appeared to depend on incentives such as government support or freebies given by the event rather than an intrinsic desire to go green, or simply put, personal values. My observation here is that more in-depth drivers, like support from stakeholders and green living, come later and are probably more sustainable than surface ones. I'd like to leave you with a thought that I've developed recently regarding event legacies in the context of food events and how they play a role in contributing to the UN SDGs. When I consider drivers and barriers to greening events, be they for the environment, economy, or society, I think we can categorize them into surface ones and in-depth ones. Education induces positive change through knowing and practicing the UN SDGs. These can be instilled by personal values of event goers and event organizers recognizing their instrumental role in creating a sustainable future. Likewise, peer pressure from others, for example, competitors of event organizers or other event goers may also encourage a better implementation of objectives leading to the UN SDGs. Food events are diverse because they cover not only environmental aspects of sustainability, but also opportunities for understanding of different cultures and values, as well as potential economic development, particularly of vulnerable communities. Well, I think that's all for me today. I hope these ideas are somewhat thought-provoking and inspiring. I hope these ideas help event organizers to rethink how their events can be more inherently sustainable and therefore contributing to the UN SDGs. This is my email address and link to my work profile. Don't hesitate to drop me a line if you need to, and feel free to connect on social media. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ubaldino, for your presentation and also your interesting framework that you introduced and shared with us today. What I immediately take home is that, yeah, the interesting and challenging criteria that are imposed on food festivals, food events, is something that also slowly, let's say, is recognized for other types of events like business events. So it's definitely a learning space that we can address later in the Q and A session. So let's move on to our third speaker.
Yeah, let's invite Dr. Kirsten Holmes, who is also the advisory board member for International Journal of Business Events for her presentation.
Good morning, my name's Kirsten Holmes.
Good morning. My name is Kirsten Holmes. I'm a professor in tourism at Curtin University in Perth and I'm going to be talking about the contribution that volunteers make to the business event sector. So in particular, I'm going to champion their contribution to the my sector and talk about the trends, challenges and opportunities for volunteering in business events. So my colleagues and I conceptualize volunteering within tourism context to include both host volunteering and guest volunteering. Within host volunteering, volunteers can be involved in planning and management roles in uh boards, tourism association, chambers of commerce, for example, and also in operational roles, particularly events and festivals, and this is where their involvement in the my sector happens. Now, these can be small community festivals as well as huge macro events like the Olympics. They're also involved in the emergency and rescue services such as surf lifesaving or mountain rescue, um, in meet and greet programs at airports, uh, in cities, uh, cruise ship ports. Uh, they staff visitor information centers, they provide guided tours to a whole range of different visitor attractions. Um, and they can also act as campground hosts, which is a popular role in Australia, where I'm based, and also in the US in national park campgrounds where they help the visitors settle in and they check their money um and they allocate them to their spaces. On the demands, on the um uh demand side, we have volunteer tourists as guest volunteers. Uh, and volunteer tourism has received a lot of attention from researchers over the years. Um, another area of volunteering that has received a lot of attention is volunteers in events and festivals. But this has primarily been the large macro events that I mentioned just now, the Olympics, the Commonwealth Games, uh, the FIFA World Cup, these kind of large sporting events. There's been very little research about the role of volunteers in um the my sector, in business events, conferences, exhibitions, um um expos, those kinds of big events. There's a little bit of research, particularly in China, but not a lot, so we don't know an awful lot about the details here. What we do know is that they do provide important contributions to business events. They provide additional capacity so event organizers can get more done. They have more people to help out the delegates, to help out the attendees at these events. Uh, they can do more things, they can do different things because of this additional um staffing power. It's also a way to train our future workforce. So a lot of the ways in which people get involved in volunteering in the business event sector is when they're students and they're studying and they're trying to get into the industry and it's a good way of getting some work experience uh and, and helping them make contacts in the sector as well. It's also a way of connecting tourism businesses with the local community. It, the my sector is one of the less visible areas of tourism compared to, say, those huge mega events or, you know, cruise ships turning up in a port, which is really noticeable. So this is a really good way to engage the local community and for them to get to meet uh business tourists and welcome them to their town and get to know them a little bit. Uh, and we know that research shows residents who are involved in the tourism sector that tend to have more positive views of the role of tourism in their local economy. So this is a real positive potential benefit um for business events uh volunteering. I think it's also important to be aware that there are different streams of volunteers. So I've mentioned students who volunteer in business events, often it's also family and friends who are helping out as well. But one of the challenges that's facing volunteering globally is that volunteer participation is changing. In particular, it's in decline and people are volunteering for fewer hours. Um, so there's just less volunteer energy and this is challenging for volunteer-involved organizations. Much of this is as a result of the COVID restrictions and concerns that have reduced people's willingness to participate in volunteering. Um, but it's also, COVID has exacerbated some trends in volunteer participation and, and people want to volunteer in different ways and we're seeing this as being exacerbated. Uh, particularly people want to volunteer online because that was one of the few ways they could volunteer during COVID. Um, and people also want to volunteer in more episodic ways. Uh, by episodic, we mean sort of short bursts of volunteering. That's actually very good news for the business event sector and for the event sector more generally, because that's the kind of volunteering that people want to engage in. Another trend that we've seen grow up during COVID, the COVID restrictions is that volunteers are more likely to self-organize and become um involved in informal volunteering within their community, which is a little bit different from the kind of ways in which uh business events need people to volunteer, which is a, a more formal process. Both the trends in volunteering, um, there's both some positives and some concerns for the business event sector. What I do want to note is that volunteering is very culturally specific. So the way that people volunteer in Australia, where I'm based, is different from the way that people volunteer in Malaysia, for example, and in other countries around the world. There's a number of structural and cultural factors to influence volunteer participation. Those include the level of religiosity uh within a country and, and to a certain extent the type of religion, the way it's organized, also the political system, the welfare state and the level of individualism within a country. So this is using Hofstetter's measure of individualism and collectivism. So what um studies of volunteer participation around the world have shown is that countries with a more individualistic uh culture tend to have more formal volunteering systems and those with a more collectivist country, uh, collectivist culture tend to have more um informal volunteer systems. People are more likely to volunteer within their local community and less likely to participate through a formal organization. All of these factors interact and influence each other and they form the basis for volunteering. In particular, um, they impact on the type of volunteering that takes place, uh, the need for voluntary activity. So you can imagine that in an individualistic country, people are less likely to help out within their community and so there is a need for more formal volunteer structures compared to, say, a collectivist culture. It also impacts on how different cultures define and understand volunteering and the images of volunteering um that we see in the media within that country. So people's perceptions of volunteering generally. We do know that people understand, uh, have a, generally a, a clear understanding of what volunteering definitely is. Um, but around some of the grayer areas where is it volunteering, is it work experience, is it student placement, which are some of the questions that might come up with student involvement in business events, there's a bit more gray area and there's less consensus globally on whether that's volunteering or some other type of activity, which might have implications for recruiting um students to business events volunteer roles. So what challenges does this create for volunteer engagement? Well, the trends in volunteering have resulted in a mismatch between organizational need and volunteer preferences. People want to volunteer, volunteer in their own way, in their own time. So they want to volunteer in convenient ways, um, they want to create their own volunteer roles. Uh, research that we've done, we found people have quite a clear idea about what they want to do as a volunteer. They will go to an organization and say, have you got a role like this? If there isn't a role like that, they will go somewhere else. Uh, they're not willing necessarily to compromise what they want to do. We know that the cost of living crisis that's impacting uh globally is having an impact on volunteering as well. So things like the travel expenses, um, other out-of-pocket expenses, uniforms, training, food, all of those uh making people less inclined to volunteer. Because they're giving their time for free, they don't expect to also have to pay to volunteer. And we're also seeing increased uh compliance and regulations and this is particularly grown with the result of COVID around all the health restrictions, health and safety restrictions um and considerations around COVID and reporting requirements for volunteering organizations. So that's a little bit tricky as well. But there's positives, there are a lot of opportunities for the sector. Um, as I talked about earlier, people want to volunteer in events. It's a particular type of volunteering they really want to do and this is only increasing over the years. I mean, it's a trend that was first identified in the nineteen-nineties and it's just grown and grown. We know as well from our research that corporate volunteering is still strong, that um corporations encourage their staff to volunteer and again, this is in a very episodic way. So they'll give them one or two or a few more days off each year to go and volunteer and they might want to take their whole team. So business events offer a really good way to engage those corporate volunteers. Third-party recruiters also offer a really good way to engage with volunteers. So this can include um organizations that are training people to work in the sector like further education establishments, schools, universities, but it can also include certain organizations. So here in Australia, we have an organization called I Need Helpers, which recruits, trains and manages volunteers for a range of different events in Sydney and Melbourne. Uh, following on from that, there's also an opportunity to create a pool of business events volunteers. So Manchester Event Volunteers was an example of such a pool that was established following the Commonwealth Games in Manchester in the early two thousands. Uh, and following this, the local city council set up um a broker service to match willing volunteers with event placements. Um, and again, the volunteers can build up their experience, their, their training. Um, whereas the broker can ensure that the volunteer placements are well organized and provide the kind of activities that volunteers want. It's a real opportunity for a win-win situation. So going forward, how can we support the business events workforce? Well, the first thing is, it has to be made easy to volunteer. The volunteer role needs to be flexible, low-cost, with minimal bureaucracy. All of those challenges need to be borne by the hosting organization, by the event organizers. Uh, volunteer roles, there needs to be a way of customizing these, of kind of procreating the volunteer um positions that volunteers want to do. So there needs to be real kind of opportunity to um create these bespoke roles, to look at what are the needs of each individual volunteer, what do they want to do, what do they want to get out of the experience and how can that be facilitated? There's the opportunity to partner with third-party suppliers such as schools, TAFE's university and also that opportunity to look at within a destination, if there's a number of different business events, how can those organizations work together to pool their resources um and, and ensure they've got a, a steady stream of um ideally experienced and trained volunteers going forward. Finally, there's a lot of opportunities to involve a diverse range of volunteers at all levels. People want, who might want to re-enter the workforce. Business event volunteering is just a fantastic opportunity for them to gain some really good experience, get back into the idea of working, get used to dealing with clients, build up some experience um in a customer-facing role, which can help them move on. So that, that, that's a great opportunity which could be linked again with um a third-party supplier uh or, or an employment office, for example. Corporate volunteers that I've talked about earlier is a really good opportunity if there's some great corporations. Maybe it's a form of sponsorship that can help with business events as well. And also, early retired people might want to keep their hands in um and do some occasional volunteering as well. Um, and they'll have a wealth of experience from their working careers that can be drawn on. There's an absolute need to be proactive in recruitment and particularly to focus on raising the profile of business tourism volunteering. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kirsten Holmes, for your presentations. Um, okay, the topic that you have mentioned is now, which is about the horse and also the guest uh volunteering, is really uh, has provided a great insight to everybody of uh, like everyone of us. Like now we know our responsible, but we are the host um for the conference of business events, what are our responsible and then we can also um uh involve in the other people's destinations, okay, as a uh guest volunteers. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, thank you, uh, all the presenters. Uh, before we uh go on for our live uh Q and A session, I change a bit the, the shared slide here for the general announcement. Um, you can read that for your information about E certificate and so on and later access to conference material. Uh, we invite now uh, say, the audience in the room and also online uh to raise questions and we do that uh altogether in life.